How was your Christmas?
Good.
Really good. Whoa, whoa, wow. Oh, nice, I forgot that. That's great.
Recording in progress.
Buddy, who is in the, in the room and in the, online and so forth. Let's get a roll call.
Mayor Lay.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dickinson.
Here.
Councilmember Fahey.
Here.
Councilmember Hamlington.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner.
Here.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Public comments on items not on the agenda and items on the consent agenda. Do we have any?
We have one card from Sherri Summer.
How many minutes on this one? Is it three? Okay.
Not 20 minutes. Sherri Summer, Louisville. I have an item that is on, on the consent agenda. I'll just read out the text. Staff recommends, recommends council approve changing the 1-9 and 1-23 study sessions to special meetings to give staff direction regarding discussion items at those meetings if needed. I've never really seen this kind of process on, on the agenda, and so that's what I, why I'm asking about it, just because I think transparency is just, just the mother of calm and, and, and knowledge is just so helpful. So, so I just want to be clear, we're not having special meetings at all in those evenings. It's just going to be time for in-depth discussion on future agenda items. I know you're not going to answer me, but you could like, I don't know, wave or wiggle your heads if you wanted to. So, when the packets come out, I think it will be very, very helpful to have some more detail about what's going to be discussed. This is very, very general, and so what you're approving on this consent agenda is, is, is extremely, it's extremely general. It's like, you know, here's a top hat, put your hand in, might be a bunny rabbit, might be a rattlesnake, we don't really know. So I think it would be really great on the, when you, when the packets come out that we get more information on what the topics are, reasons for the discussion, and just a short reason, description for why they're on those. I personally am curious, like, do these topics pertain to a certain general area of interest, like development, affordable housing? Are they process questions? Are we changing process? Are we changing code? Will decisions be made? And I think if decisions will be made that night by council, it's definitely very, very important that we know what is ahead, so the public can participate. Thank you very much.
I have no other sign-up cards and there's no hands raised online.
Okay. Anybody else for a public comment? Absolutely. Okay. Counsel, let's see. Oh, we got a. Sorry, counsel informational comments and pertinent items.
I would, I would move that we pass the consent agenda.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Counsel informational comments and pertinent items not on the agenda. Does anybody have any pertinent items not on the agenda on which they would like to report? There is one that I wanted to report on, which is, we just passed two-year anniversary of the Marshall Fire, which I think a lot of us consider to be the most signal event in the city's history, or potentially one of, of two. And I, I wanted to say to all of those who lost their homes, including the two we have on our council now, that we are, continue to be sorry for your loss, and hope that you are back in your home, your new home as, as soon as possible, and know that the recovery and recovery, both sort of financial and emotional, goes on, and we're wanting to be part of that solution. So, you'll hear more, I think, as we go on, but I wanted to say thank you to everybody who has participated in any way in the events to support the fire survivors, volunteers, and, which include many survivors. Council members, especially staff right here, who've been tireless for two years in working through a lot of very, very thorny issues, and we've got a long way to go. But I wanted to recognize that, that date had come and gone, and I'm, I guess I'm pleased that we've made as much progress as we've had. One thing I guess I wanted to mention, that I think is really significant, is that in California typically, the, the folks who have moved back into areas where there'd been urban wildfires, and like the one we had, have been different than the ones who lost their homes. In most cases, a lot wealthier and putting a great deal of, just turning their communities into something very different. And we have a pretty astonishing number of people who are coming back, and that is a really great, it's not everybody, but it, it is, we're doing better than the other places in the country, and particularly California, and I think that's something to be very proud of, and I think that's attributable to a whole bunch of people. It's hard to single out everybody, but I wanted to at least mention those few. And anyway, anything else from? Okay. City manager's report.
We have no city manager.
Well, we, I think we don't have a city manager right now. Who's next in line in order of succession here? Meredith?
I'm going to say we don't have any report this year.
Okay, good. I kind of figured somebody had to say that. All right. The next piece of regular business is very exciting, which is the swearing-in of the presiding municipal judge and city attorney. So it will be first, the Judge Thrower, and second, City Attorney Kelly. So I'll leave it to Meredith to start that.
Hi, David Thrower.
Hi, David Thrower.
Do solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the City of Louisville.
The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the City of Louisville, Colorado.
And faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Municipal Judge.
And faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Municipal Judge.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
I, Kathleen Kelly.
I, Kathleen Kelly.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the City of Louisville, Colorado.
The ordinances and the Home Rule Charter of the City of Louisville, Colorado.
And faithfully perform the duties of the Office of City Attorney.
And faithfully perform the duties of the Office of City Attorney.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
Just one word about that. We evaluate the agreements that we have with the municipal judge and the city attorney, who are two of the only people who actually report to council. It's kind of an odd situation with Judge Thrower, because he's really, he's sort of independent of all of us. But I wanted to say that we have two of the finest people in these positions, and such that anybody would be interested in either kind of job, these are the people who would probably be most enthusiastic about explaining what they do and how they do it. And I really appreciate how Judge Thrower does his work, and we go through a process every year, or every year, to evaluate both of these folks and the other folks that we employ directly, which include the prosecutor, this water attorney, and our city manager. And they've, these two have come with flying colors, and that's a really good thing, and we're very pleased that you're with us. And Kathleen is, I've just grown to really, really appreciate and trust the, the kind of advice, and even on things that I do every day, as an employment attorney, she is really good. And it's very different being a, a client than it is being a lawyer for a client. So I want to thank both of you. All right, and then the next one is proclamation for Dr. Martin Luther King Day 2024, and turn to Mayor Protem, Caleb Dickinson, to review that.
Thank you, Mayor, yeah. It's an honor to read the proclamation today, so I will, I will get right to it. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to the advancement of civil rights in public service, and believed in a nation of freedom and justice for all, and challenged all citizens to live up to the purpose and potential of America, and whereas a guiding principle for Dr. King's work was nonviolence, once considered the highest form of activism and radical change, which in its basic truth is the way to transform unjust systems and broken relationships. And whereas Dr. King declared, "We shall not relinquish our privilege and our obligation to love. This is the only way to create the beloved community." Outlining his vision for beloved community as one in which our global community practices justice, peace, love, and connection. And whereas Dr. King and the activists of the civil rights movement risked and sacrificed their lives to transform public policy from segregation to integration, resulting in the repeal of state laws mandating racial segregation in the South, known as the Jim Crow laws, the passage of the Federal Civil Rights Act of 1964, the Voting Rights Act of 1965, and other anti-discrimination laws aimed at ending economic, legal, and social segregation in America, and leading to Dr. King winning the Nobel Peace Prize on December 10th, 1964. And whereas, the theme of the King Center this year is shifting the cultural climate through the study and practice of Kingian nonviolence, a strategic approach to challenging injustice, navigating conflict, and creating more compassionate, constructive cultures. And whereas, the movement to recognize Dr. King's legacy as a federal holiday began four days after his assassination, yet took 15 years of struggle before his birthday was finally approved as a federal holiday, and an additional 17 years for it to be recognized in all 50 states. And whereas, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day is an opportunity for us to recognize his teachings in seeing the commonality of our dreams, our hopes, and our fears, the threads, truth, and dignity that binds us together as human beings, and to encourage each citizen to take part in service that will benefit our communities and neighborhoods. And now, therefore, be it resolved, that the City of Louisville, City Council hereby proclaims the third Monday of the month of January as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and recognizes same as a day to seek inspiration for personal and collective action by honoring the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and by observing this United States federal holiday.
Would you like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the proclamation.
Second.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thanks, everybody.
All right. Our next item is Resolution Number Two, Series 2024, a resolution approving Second Amendment to the Sales Tax Revenue Sharing Intergovernmental Agreement with the Town of Superior regarding a temporary waiver of tax revenues due to the city for purposes of providing a business incentive. Can we get a staff presentation? Thanks, Austin.
Good evening, counsel. Austin Brown for staff. The item before you tonight is a Second Amendment to the Sales Tax Revenue Sharing Agreement with the Town of Superior for a temporary waiver of sales tax revenue. The City of Louisville and the Town of Superior have a Sales Tax Revenue Sharing Intergovernmental Agreement, or IGA, for the South property, an area currently in Superior that previously had been in the City of Louisville. The IGA provides that the Town of Superior will share with Louisville 50% of the sales tax revenue collected in the sharing area, and this percentage is based on a 2.7% sales tax rate. Bigsby's Folly Winery and Restaurant intends to purchase Block Four in downtown Superior and construct a 7,500 square foot event-based restaurant concept. The proposed expansion to Superior includes a total capital investment of $6.7 million. It's anticipated that the business will create 45 new jobs with an average pay of $30 to $65 per hour. Since Block Four is within the IGA area, both Louisville and Superior would receive sales tax revenues of 1.35% from the new business. In June 2023, Superior entered into an incentive agreement with Bigsby's Folly, which will provide a rebate of the town's 1.35% portion of sales tax revenues collected from the company for the first 10 years of operation, not to exceed $1 million. Superior has requested that City Council support new development in the revenue area by providing a rebate of up to 100% of the city's 1.35% sales tax revenue for this project. Per council direction, staff is proposing a 50% rebate of the city's 1.35% sales tax rate. This is consistent with the 50% rebate that the city typically offers to eligible new and expanding businesses through its Business Assistance Program. A typical BAP agreement would rebate 50% of the city's 3% retail sales tax rate for up to a 10-year period. Under the BAP structure, the city rebates back to the company 50% of the sales tax that the company remitted to the city the previous year. Under the proposed amendment, the city would temporarily waive 50% of the 1.35% sales tax revenue that it would normally collect. This temporary waiver would be in effect for 10 years from the commencement date, until the city has waived $500,000 in tax revenues, or until the total sum of rebates received by the company from both Louisville and Superior reaches $1 million, whichever occurs first. The amendment requires that all revenues must be used by Superior to provide rebates to the company as dictated by its incentive agreement. Additionally, the amendment stipulates that the project must be completed by December 31st, 2026. If the project has not been completed by this date, the agreement becomes void. Finally, in the event that the company is required to reimburse Superior for any reason under the terms of its incentive agreement, Superior will reimburse to Louisville a percentage of any reimbursement that it receives from the company. Right now, in the drafted resolution, that is 25%. I think we just realized a little bit earlier today that we might need to change that to 33%, but we'll make sure that we have the correct language on the resolution moving forward. The subject parcel is currently vacant and not generating any sales tax revenue. Based on estimates provided by the company, Bigsby's Folly projects $20.3 million in total retail sales over its first five years of operation. When accounting for the city's 50% share of the sales tax rate, the company would owe approximately $274,500 in taxes to the city over this time period. Under the proposed amendment, Louisville would collect $137,250 in retail sales tax, while waiving the remaining $137,000 during this five-year period. The city would continue to waive 50% of its sales tax revenue for another five years, or until either of the caps included in the amendment has been met. Following the termination of the agreement through any of the means outlined in the amendment, the city would go back to collecting its full 2.7% sales tax rate. Staff recommends approval of Resolution Number Two, Series 2024, amending the IGA with the Town of Superior. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions. We also have representatives from Bigsby's Folly, as well as the Town of Superior, and I think Bigsby's Folly would appreciate a chance to address council if that's okay.
Sure. Why don't we, why don't we start with that?
Just get one clarifying question from Austin, just about a number. Excuse me. Just at the very end, you said, "We'd return to receiving 2.7%, but we'd only get 1.35", right? Like, the cities would get 2.7, and that could split 50/50?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure, we were never getting to 2.7. Okay, thanks.
Questions?
Does the City of Superior have a Business Assistance Program in place, or is this something that they put together specifically for this applicant? Austin, do you know the answer to that question?
I believe this is the first incentive agreement that Superior has offered, and I know we have Jill from the Town of Superior. Is that correct?
Good evening. My name is Jill Mendoza. I'm the Economic Development Manager for the Town of Superior, and we offer incentives to businesses on a case-by-case basis. We do have a grant program within the Town of Superior that is for new and existing businesses, but within the downtown, we've looked at them on a case-by-case basis. So this is the second, actually, incentive that we've offered to a business. But the significance of this business is really what has compelled us to engage with the City of Louisville.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? I've got actually a couple, briefly. You'd mentioned 33% as opposed to the 25%. Can you explain that, Austin? The, the difference there?
Yeah, absolutely. So when we had first drafted the agreement, we were looking at a potential 50% share or 100% share, and then at 100% share, both Louisville and Superior would receive 50% of the reimbursement. Once we dropped that down to a 50% share, we only dropped the, we dropped the reimbursement down to 25%, when in actuality Louisville would be contributing a third of the total revenue, so that reimbursement should be a third of the total.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just one more. Is currently the Louisville BAP program is typically 50% of, is it a 3.65% tax rate?
So, under the existing BAP program, we can only rebate the 3%.
3%?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And maybe a follow-up to that, which is, have we changed anything about our BAP program as a result of this particular proposal that's come to us?
We have not yet made any changes since receiving this proposal.
Okay. And there's, and the reason I ask that is that we did receive, and I could, I can mention this in the comments, but I, I think it's worthwhile mentioning it now. I know that Superior, the Board of Trustees had come to us asking for more, more of an incentive than we were willing ultimately provide. We, we thought about that, we had a discussion about it and decided not to do that, but I just wanted to make sure that folks knew that that's what we did to make sure that we were in parity with the assistance that we give to other businesses. I know that the trustees were not necessarily thrilled with that, and I, I don't blame them, but I, and, and I'll get to that in a minute, because we owe them some gratitude for what they've done, and if there's not anything more, why don't we? Any more questions? Are you sure?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we hear from the folks who may be moving in up there?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate that clarification, too.
Do we have the presentation?
Yeah, I have it.
Not what we had intended, but this will be helpful. Marla can, yeah.
There's a presentation, yeah. Let's see, amendment.
And before you give your presentation, can you just state your name and?
I don't know.
Yep, you're, where you're from.
Well, Austin's doing that, I can speak loudly enough. I'm Chad Yetka. My wife, Marla, together, we are the founders of Bigsby's Folly Craft Winery, which is currently located in the River North Arch District in Denver. Thanks for having us tonight.
There we go.
Sorry about that.
Not a problem. Okay. That'll work. Once again, Chad Yetka, owner of Bigsby's Folly. Bigsby's Folly got its start the year 2017, and it all started with a simple question. Why can't you do the same thing for wine that brew pubs have done for beer? After all, craft brew, breweries got their start here in Colorado. So, we couldn't come up with a great answer why not, so we were off to races. One of the first things that you obviously do as an entrepreneur is you gather your friends together, and we debuted the concept with them, and they were unanimous and unabashed in their viewpoint that we were absolutely batshit crazy. Because, you know, we've all heard, a lot of us have heard the old saw, if you want to make a small fortune in the wine industry, start with a large one. So, dreams are hard, though, and this one was particularly sturdy. You hence then, you also know now the end of the folly, Bigsby's Folly part of the name, because it's folly to head down this path. More on Bigsby's in a minute. So, we decided that we're going to go ahead with the project anyways. We sold all, including my wife's dream house that she spent two years building. Thankfully, that dream still remains a dream and has not yet turned into a nightmare. So fortunately for us, right, the, the, the market response was very, very encouraging. People bought into the vibe that we were trying to develop of casting people back in time to the roaring twenties, when the American dream was alive and well, and people used to get together and do something very strange. Over a glass of wine, they would actually talk to one another. We don't have TVs in our place. We want to encourage people to actually connect, and the roaring twenties vibe actually struck the heartstrings of a lot of people, thankfully. Now, you see a lot of the stuff that we do, but we've mentioned that we're actually an event venue as well. We do over 500 events a year, and a substantial portion of those events are weddings. And as you know weddings, we don't tend to do them twice, but weddings tend to be multi-day events, so that redounds to the entire community and brings people from without the community to see what's happening here, and we think that would be, bode well for this community as well. So, last but not least, we've been very successful. You know, we've mentioned we got started in 2017. You know, counting COVID, I guess we feel like we've been in business for about 27 years instead of seven. But yes, and this is the concept that we want to bring to this area. Last but not least, I already mentioned that I was going to tell you about Bigsby. The key to our success, we believe, is in the name Bigsby's Folly, and why is that? Well, Bigsby was my wife and I's first golden retriever together, and he was that special dog that you hope to have once in your life, that regardless of how crappy a day you had, when you showed up at the door at the end of the day, he found a made, way to make it better. Now, he's no longer with us, but he lives on in what our team members try to accomplish on a daily basis. So this is what we want to bring to this greater area. So, turn, turn it over to my wife, Marla. She's going to walk you through a couple of the pictures and talk about what we're envisioning for the town of Superior.
Hi. So, our building in the River North Art District, we were lucky enough to find is, was born in nineteen, or 1988?
Eighteen eighty-six.
Eighteen eighty-six. Sorry about that. So it's about 150 years old. It's got 30-foot ceilings, exposed brick, and most importantly, eight-foot chandeliers all over the whole place. So, it was pretty rare and unique, and when we looked at expanding, Chad and I spent about a year going all over the metro area, down to Parker, the DTC, up to Boulder, and we couldn't find another building, anything that we felt represented our brand. We then had a, one of our regular customers come in and talk to us about what was going to be happening in the downtown Superior. And when we first saw the property, it was in 2019, and it was just dirt, but we thought, well, since we can't find a building that's going to represent the brand, maybe we just build it from scratch. And we saw what was going to be happening in Superior, Louisville, and this entire community, and we could really see the vision and for us being part of that community. So, one year of COVID later, and then the Marshall fires. We've been working on this project for a little over three years now, and we're finally at a place where we can actually see buildings in Superior. It's very exciting, and we're working with our design team right now on the build-out. It's not going to be a 150-year-old building, but we are going to bring all the chandeliers, the elegance, and approachability of our tasting room to Superior. And from the little bit that we've put out there into the community, I think it's 800727. Yeah, then the feedback has been great. People want us to open up tomorrow. I would love for ours to open up tomorrow. But anyhow, I'll let Chad finish it up. Here's another little rendering here of a full rooftop deck, which is going to have incredible views of the flat irons, indoor/outdoor space, lots of fluidity between the two spaces, and Chad mentioned we do a lot of weddings. Right now, to our chagrin in Rhino, we do have to shut down for service when we do 100 and 150-person wedding. We've designed this space so that we can remain open all the time. We've got enough space set aside, so if we do have a wedding, we can still continue to serve our Louisville and Superior neighbors. So that part's super exciting for us. And then we also know all those weddings and people that are coming in are going to be looking for places to stay, so we do think we'll, we'll be able to help generate some revenue for the hotels in Louisville and the other restaurants and businesses.
Thanks, Marla. And, yeah, good job. Absolutely spectacular rooftop deck. That's the one thing that nobody was willing to relent on. She mentioned that we've been at this since 2019, looking at this location. Marshall fire, COVID, obviously, we're well, very, very invested in this area and want to make this come through to fruition. We're in the final stages right now of doing the due diligence. The one thing, well, actually, it's two things, because we got a double whammy. And the time that we've been looking at this, and this is, the combination of two things have really set us back, and that's why we're here before you tonight. You know, one is the fact that the construction costs have gone up by about 50%, and then two, and we're going to have to finance this because we're a mom-and-pop shop, family-owned business, the cost of financing has more than doubled. And the combination of those two has taken what was, at the time in 2019, an extremely compelling business case, and added a whole bunch of risk and really reduced the, the payoff that we could envision. So, you know, we've been working with the town of Louisville, I'm sorry, Superior, to, to try to find a way to reduce the risk that we're incurring, because we're, once again, at the juncture of risking it all. We'll do this with debt, but we're going to do SBA financing, and that means you're putting everything on the line again and signing personal guarantees. For us, with the son going to college, maybe even CU next year, it's a really risky endeavor, and we're just asking for, you know, a little bit of assistance in helping us to manage that risk so that we can be successful. And, oh, by the way, we're planning on moving up that, up here. And for that, that's Bigsby's Folly. Thank you for your time today. I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions? Thank you for the presentation. Okay, why don't we take some public comment? Do we have any? I don't have anybody online, but do we have anybody?
I have two cards. The first is Sherri Summer.
Sherri Summer, Louisville. I really appreciated hearing about your business. It sounds like that you're really good business people, that you have a really great concept, and you have a proven track record, and those are all just, you know, it's just very important for towns to be able to attract businesses like that. So thanks for presenting that. So I was at the meeting where we discussed the rebate of the taxes and Superior's proposal to, to ask us to rebate 100%. And, you know, during that meeting, I really, I just, I respect Councilmember Hoffner so much, his, his ability to say so much in so few words, and that night, I just got even more respect for him for his foresight, because he said, you know, it's fine to do this, but we should be fair. We shouldn't do more than we do for our own businesses. So, and when we have the, and, and I believe it was Councilmember Hamilton who really picked up on that and, and said, you know, I think this is a very good idea, and I really do agree, I did agree, and I do agree. In fact, actually, this rebate that we're talking about is more than we give our own businesses, slightly more. So if you say that the sales tax in Superior is 2.7%, you divide that into, we will get 1.35%, and we'd return 50, 50, we'd be returning 50% of that. If we look at our sales tax, the maximum we would give to our businesses is 3%. If you, the most they can get is a, is 3% rebate, which is an 82% rebate of their sales tax, but if you divide that 82% in half, the most they would be getting, say we were doing a similar revenue sharing agreement, is 41%. So we're actually giving, we give our own businesses 41, it would work out to be 41% in a similar scenario here, and with this revenue sharing in Superior, it'd be actually 50%. So, I do think that while personal stories are very, very important, and they give a lot of context, I do think that we need to be very clear about being fair, and we need to be fair to the businesses that we have in our, our own city, because if we're not, if we're not consistent, it opens up a lot of problems later on, and it, it just isn't right. So thank you very much.
The next card I have is from George Colbert.
I'm hoping we can keep those pictures up there. Good evening. Hi, everybody. George Colbert, Louisville, Colorado, Ward Two. Thanks for having me in tonight. Happy New Year, and congratulations to Mayor Lay and Councilman Fahy on your recent election wins. Haven't seen you since then, so just want to say that. I also want to just say a few words in support of the tax waiver for Bigsby's Folly. I've been a frequent customer since they opened in 2017. It is a phenomenal business. I've taken business associates, employees, customers, et cetera. We've been there many, many times, and it is a phenomenal business. When I learned that they were thinking about opening a spot here or near our area, I was, quite frankly, elated. I know how great it's going to be for this area. Not only is it great because they produce fantastic wine, not only because they produce fantastic food, not only because they're great people or provide an incredible atmosphere, but I know the effect it will have on our local businesses. They mentioned these events. I've seen it firsthand. I mean, it is incredibly difficult to get a reservation there many times throughout the years, because they host very large events. Those people come from near and far, and they need places to stay, they need places to shop. I know that our downtown businesses will have, will, will recognize some value from them being here. I can see a, a very beautiful symbiotic relationship between Bigsby's Folly and the businesses in Louisville, which, in my idea, is a perfect win-win situation. I'm also, just heard that Chad and Marla are planning to move here. I think they will make fantastic neighbors. Our collective brain power just went up substantially. I've had the, had the opportunity to spend a lot of time speaking a lot of different business ideas with them, and I know that there'll be, it'd be a positive impact for us in more ways than one. So I think approving this resolution is a great opportunity to kick off 2024 in a business-friendly and neighborly manner. I thank you for your time, and have a great night.
Thank you. Anybody online? Anybody else? Okay. Why don't we go to council comments? Who would like to just kick those off?
I'll start. Thank you. Thank you. This, I'm very excited. That's why I wanted to go first. This way Caleb can't say everything I wanted to say. This is great. This is the kind of business endeavor that we have been talking about for over a year. When I'm out talking to residents, friends, neighbors, or on the, just in the town, this is what we're hoping for. This, this revitalizes not only our downtown area, but this revitalizes the McCaslin Corridor, and we need that help so badly, and I'm really excited about this. I really look at this as kind of a joint sister community venture, because you are going to be right over the bridge. So many of our residents, this is going to be really accessible to them. I, I'm very excited. I love the idea that this impacts additional Louisville businesses. That in itself is a great reason to help you. So, the fact that we're going to be revitalizing McCaslin in a really awesome way with something that isn't just another business, it is actually recreational, it's pleasurable, the residents really get to have a good time with it, potentially some jobs for some locals, which would be terrific. I love that you're going to remain open for the big events. Thank you. That's an awesome foresight that you put into this. I, yeah, no, I think that's it. I think I just, I'm just very thrilled that you're doing this. I'm hoping that this encourages other business owners to approach us and say, you know what? It's a big risk, but I'll take it, because the people of Louisville and Superior, clearly, want us here and want to work with us, and so I'm excited for the future. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I wonder if we could just have a, a quick clarification from Austin on, on how the percentages stack up and, and whether this proposal is in parity with what we're doing for Louisville businesses, or, I'm not sure I completely followed the math in the public comment we heard earlier.
Yeah, absolutely, and I didn't have those numbers prepared, so I'll try and speak to those. So typically, we rebate 3% of the total Louisville tax, which I believe as of the election is now 3.75%. So I imagine that number percentage came from 3% of the 3.75%. That was my best guess. And again, I just don't have that number in front of me, so I don't have that checked very quickly. And-
Sorry, we, we don't do 3% of anything, right? We do 50% of 3%.
Right. So I think the 80% number from the public comment may have been 3% out of the total 3.75, what used to be 3.65 is my best guess.
Okay.
But yeah, it would be 50% of the 3% that we can actually rebate, so that'd be a total rebate of 1.5%. For this particular project, we collect 50% of a 2.7% sales tax, so we'd be collecting 1.35%, and this proposal would rebate 50% of that, which leaves us with .0675%, if that helps.
So, just to maybe clarify, in both cases, it's 50% of the applicable sales tax that's eligible to be rebated?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think, I, I think we're going to get to a conclusion tonight pretty easily, just kind of figuring out the details of it, but I think one thing that struck me at the beginning of Austin's presentation is just the concept of this whole area, right, is, which is, we get, it's not in the city of Louisville anymore, but the agreement is when stuff goes on there, we get half of the sales tax that's collected, and so there's a part of me, you know, we're not in the zoning part of this project, we're not in the PUD part, we're not out there recruiting Bigsby, we're not, you know, claiming whether or not Bigsby is going to be the anchor tenant that's going to make this whole thing go. We're not a part of any of that process that Superior is a part of, and what I'm hearing from Superior is that this is a special tenant for them that is going to kickstart, and, and again, that classic anchor tenant, and so they're trying to do something special, and they're giving back all of their sales tax for a period of time. And so my first thing in reading, listening to is like, right, so what's half of nothing? Like, they're not getting any, like, if they're not, if they're going to give it all back, we're going to get half of what they get, which is nothing. We're doing the same thing they're doing. We're getting half of that sales tax revenue, and they're choosing for that to be zero because it's important enough to bring this business in for the, you know, the auxiliary benefits, and the business itself, but the auxiliary benefits. So that's one piece, is I, you know, I, I kind of err on the side of, this is very abnormal for us. We've never done a BAP in Superior. I like the idea of matching what Superior's doing as a sister city and being like, if this is, you've done all the legwork here, and you've done the whole thing, but I do hear what, especially not just Dietrich, but some others say, that it's like, ah, it feels pretty weird to do something for a Superior business that we don't do for a Louisville business. Like, how could we possibly give 100% back when we, when we don't do that? But again, with that funny math, right, we're, we're already only getting 50%, right? So we're only, right now, we're giving .675 back. That's not even half what we normally give back. We normally give 1.5 back, and we're only going to give .675 back. So we're giving less than half of what we normally give back. So if we give the entire 1.35 back, that's less than we norm, we normally give 1.5 back, and for them, that's actual money, right? Like, forget about where we got to the number. So if we give the entire 1.35 back, that's less than we norm, we normally give 1.5 back. And for them, that's actual money, right? Like, forget about where we got to the number. They get to keep 1.35% of their sales because of this. And a business in Louisville, if we were doing it for them, would get to keep 1.5. Now, the kicker is that Superior is giving it to them as well. So they get a total of 2.7. It's fantastic, it's a great deal. But I don't think we're actually giving more than we give a Louisville business. And we don't have a, a tax share situation in Louisville that Superior can join us in. So there's no, like, oh, well, maybe Superior will do it for you if we do it for them. We don't have a tit-for-tat kind of thing because, because of the area. So I'm 100% good to go on what's in front of us. I have no problem giving back 50% of 50% of 2.7%. But I'm fine giving 100% of 50% of 2.7%. I think that that is a totally reasonable thing to do, and I can explain it to all of my business friends here in Louisville. And if someone's super excited about moving to Superior for this one reason, that would surprise me. But I, I don't think this is overly generous, or more than we give our own people. But I'm not like, hey, everyone else, you're so wrong and wanting to do it differently. I'm okay with wherever we go with this. I just, I think it's worth considering the math there and really supporting what Superior is trying to do with the space, which is, you think about it, like, we, they don't want just a bunch of office buildings. They don't want just a bunch of residential. They want some key commercial things that activate the space in a different way. And they believe this is, they, they, they caught a giant here. And they're super excited about this, and they're doing everything they can. Also don't know how big the difference is if we give you .675 or 1.35, if that's going to change your entire business model. So it all, it goes all out there, but that's all I have. I think, I think it's a great proposal. I agree with the things you said. I'm excited for it to come. I hope it does. And I'm willing to go the full 100%, but at least the 50%.
Other comments, questions?
I'll just say, I, I appreciate you spelling all of that out. I thought that was well put, and I can see the argument both ways. Although I'm most comfortable with what we have in front of us.
Other comments? I had a couple. First of all, I think, I, I want to be clear about, I'm not going to go into the detail about the intergovernmental agreement. Because it, one way of thinking about this is this is a gift from Superior. It's not quite a gift in the sense that we long ago struck an agreement with Superior about how this particular parcel was going to be treated, what the tax revenue structure was going to look like. But I think what really is important is that Superior and, I appreciate you and the other folks on your, of your trustees have done an enormous, heavy lift on this, and we recognize that. And that's something I hope you will carry back to them. I like, Councilmember Hefner, am comfortable, more comfortable with the parity that we have with other BAPS. That's a, you know, it was something we debated, we talked about. And the, the ask was greater than that. But I think, I'm really hoping that what we've got here is going to be helpful. And that when you, you know, as soon as you can get a chance to, to push forward with the project, that you're going to be able to do so. One of the things about the project that I really, I really think is, is great is something that I think everybody on the dais cares a lot about, which is building community. This is something that, as you know, from paying attention to the fire, the aftermath of the fire, both communities really care about a lot. And I have no doubt you'll get a lot of business from even the Louisville Superior area, much less all of these others. And I have no doubt that there's going to be business that's going to be generated. And I, somebody mentioned the jobs piece, and I think that's, you know, an important part of this too. So, and, and I think one last thing is just the, the fact that we do have pretty good intergovernmental relations with Superior makes this all a lot easier and, and just less fraught, I think. So I, I'm prepared to, to support it. Is there any other question or comment that any of you have to make? Can I get a motion?
I would move, move the approval of Resolution Number 1, Series 2024.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve it at 100%. And see if it fails, we'll go back to the original motion. But I want to just entertain the, oh, it was second.
Second, first, before you can make a...
I second it.
Let me, let me just amend my motion. It's Resolution Number 2, Series 2024.
I'll second Resolution Number 2.
So I would like to offer a substitute motion, uh, motion to Resolution Number 2, giving a 100% rebate of our portion of the sales tax. I mean, I don't even have a second, let alone four.
That would be true.
Okay.
Okay, so that motion dies?
I think it failed. Yeah, it died, it's dead.
And all in favor of the original motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I, I just need to clarify, did Austin say that the resolution needs to be amended?
To the 33%.
He did, oh, I'm sorry. He did refer to the resolution, but what he meant was the IGA. It's Section 7, I believe, of the IGA, where it currently states that Louisville would receive back 25% of any funds reimbursed by the business to Superior for any reason under their IGA. And it actually would be 33% because Superior's putting in 100%. We're putting in 50%. So there's sort of three pieces of that. So 20, 25% would not make the city whole.
So do we need just a friendly amendment?
No, the resolution does allow for minor revisions like that. And since Austin already advised you that that revision would be made...
It's good enough.
It's fine.
Okay. And we're good enough with a roll call? Good.
Mayor Portem Dickinson?
Yes.
Councilmember Kern?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefner?
Yes.
Mayor Laye?
Yes. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Next is the 2024 to 2029 solid waste collection request for proposal criteria and key contract points. Director Corr, the ball is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just pull this up. This is a contract that the city has, that we put out a request for proposals every five years. We reviewed kind of how we go about this back in April with both the City Council and the Finance Committee. And then we just kind of took a pause to get through the year to approach this point in time where we're going to put the RFP out. We took all the feedback that we received last April and made adjustments based off that input. And we're proposing it here tonight for a final version of the RFP to allow you to also ask questions, get clarifications on what we're about to go through, or make any necessary changes that you might think that we missed. So based off this, it's supposed to be a flexible conversation. Let's get this up on the screen. There we go. So this is going to go out next week. It'll be out most of next month. It'll open in February. We'll go through a selection process internally with staff, and we'll bring that information to the City Council for consideration. As far as the staff goes, our job is to enable the residents to dispose of their solid waste in a convenient, environmentally responsible, and cost-effective manner. I emphasize cost-effective manner, because we will evaluate this proposal off of 60% of, 60 out of 100 points of cost. We will also take into account all other factors. But as a staff, we have to bring the best value forward for the city as a whole. And then the council can evaluate what we've provided you. And if you agree with what staff has provided, then you can award that contract as we've recommended. Or if you feel differently based off your observations of the information or input from the community, the council can guide staff to award more premium contracts or lesser premium contracts, depending on, on what you see. So just kind of preempting the process. The five-year value of this contract's around $7 million. It's pretty much the largest contract the city has, so it is an important discussion. Just a refresher, the program started in 2009. It started to incentivize recycling and composting, and also to get multiple trash haulers off our roads. Those trash trucks provide a lot of wear and tear that ultimately costs you money through paving. These are just the different periods in which the contract has existed. It's evolved up to, from having recycling included, to now recycling and compost is included. And this next evolution, we'll look at some alternates that you can give us a thumbs up tonight, or thumbs down, of maybe involving weekly recycling pickup or weekly composting pickup, again, as alternates that would be kind of add-on, value add-ons. This is just generally your service area. There are HOAs within the city that are not serviced by this contract. Any HOA can get involved in the city's program. If they're not involved in the city's program, then they have to manage their own hauler program. They can't have multiple vendors. These are just our diversion statistics. Over time, our diversion has gone down. It's kind of a reflection of what's going on in the industry. There's a few graphs here that kind of show, by tonnage, recycling's gone down. It's just kind of a product of how the industry's working. The packaging has gotten more efficient. These recyclable, you know, these films are getting thinner. And so we're just throwing, people are buying the same things, but they have less material in them, is a trend. Compost, we kind of had a, a pretty stable tonnage. COVID hit, there's a lot of yard work from home, it looks like, in 2021. And then we've obviously had some tonnage fall off from the Marshall Fire, and we're waiting for those rebuilds to come back online in the program. But overall, I'd just say, there's nothing that we're doing as a community that's really impacting our diversion rates. It's just kind of how the industry's going and larger events that have impacted us. As I said, our, our recycling of up to a 96 gallon, and up to a, and compost up to a 96 gallon, as you all know, is embedded. If you want to get an extra trash bin, you pay another almost 14 bucks for that first 32 gallons of extra. So we call that 100% increment. It costs the same amount to get that extra 32 gallons as the first 32 gallons would have cost. But then when it goes to recycling and compost, your extra bin costs, and these prices are at the bottom of this slide. Your recycling and compost extra bin costs are around $3, $2.73. So we are incentivizing that if you want an extra 96-gallon recycler compost, or 32, or 65, that, that's affordable. Now, why is that important to think about? Is, in these alternates that we're providing, or will provide in the bid, one of the things we're considering is the weekly compost or recycle, and is that value worth it? Or is it just better just to leave it as is? And if people need more space, they buy the extra bin, which is very affordable. So just something to weigh. Our base bid is going to go out, and it's going to say, hey, we prefer service days that are Tuesday through Friday, which are the routes that we have now. And then trash will be on 100% increments. You'll pay more for that 32, 64, 96 increment. Bi-weekly recycle, bi-weekly compost, natural gas equipment. That's what we have today. That's what we're provided today, and that'll be the base bid. We'll have an alternate in there. So if there's another vendor out there that wants to provide service on different days of the week, they can propose that. If they want to provide service on one day a week, they can propose that. So that's alternate one. Alternate two, we'll just add in weekly compost. Alternate three, we'll add in weekly compost and weekly recycle. And then alternate four, we'll provide an ability for a vendor to propose an all-electric fleet, or propose just an emissions offset if they can't provide an electric fleet. Therefore, you'll be able to see what is the cost to get the solid waste program to some carbon-neutral situation. And so that's kind of the value menu we're going to put out there for bidding. I kind of want to pause there and just see if you have thoughts on that.
I have a quick question about that. Are, are you wanting us to, to decide as between the alternates tonight, or the alternatives? Or is that going to be just part of the bidding process?
This will just be part of the process?
Okay.
Unless you see something that you're just, absolutely not, that's a bad idea. We don't even want to ask those questions.
Very good, thanks.
I don't see any facial reactions, so maybe we're okay.
I, I wanted to actually comment on the, because I remember sitting in on this in April, and there was a lot of, like, public involvement and comment. But one of the things I remember when the program went into effect was we were trying to limit the number of trash trucks, right, on the road. And I think we really achieved that when the program originally started, and there was single-day pickup. Now that we have every day of the week, except Monday, I guess it is, or Monday, Saturdays, Monday in the weekends, there is a lot more trash, there are, or it seems to be, there are a lot more trash trucks, maybe not in the neighborhoods, but on our major arteries. So it feels like every single day, we have dozens of trash trucks on Via Appia, on McCaslin, on South Boulder Road, on Dillon. They're just making these routes all the time. And I'm wondering if it is better for us as a community, if that's part of what we're trying to do, is reduce the wear and tear on those big roads, we don't have to, like, reduce or fix them as often, as well as maybe some of the emissions? Because I think maybe by doing trash pickup on multiple days, they're driving a lot more. So now we've increased emissions, especially if we're not going to require electric vehicles to come in. If that's not something maybe we can look at, you would know better than I. I'm just, this is just the perception that we seem now to have trash trucks everywhere, every day. Versus before, when it was one day of the week, and they just seemed to go around, and you never had the trash trucks run. Safer to cross roads when you have trash trucks, personally, I think, especially the big roads. So it's a safety component for me as well. And I love the idea, if we can encourage more frequent, especially in the summer, composting pickup. It gets pretty bad, especially with the coyotes in neighborhoods near open spaces, with them making their way in. So I thought I would bring those couple of points up. Thank you.
So alternate one will allow for a vendor to provide one day a week. We're not going to, we are currently not specifying a vendor has to provide one day a week service. We want, we're trying to give you, cast a broad net, to give you all the best options for pricing, and see what that comes up with. As far as just the logistics of that, the routes are the routes in Louisville, whether they're one day or multiple days. They're not, say, doubling up on a, you know, enclave is not getting trash trucks four days a week, just as the singular route. So there's not more trips. Where I think emissions are increased is just that travel from wherever their facility is to Louisville, that is a small amount of added emissions. But as far as the trips in Louisville, those are the same. But perceptions are perceptions. So if that's how people feel, and there's a cost to have it one day a week, and people want to pay that cost, then that is where the community and the council can make that decision.
Is there, I was looking at the pricing as well. Is there an option, or have we looked into an option to somehow have a, like, maybe a less expensive trash pickup for people who are lower income in our community? So that those of us who are, who maybe don't fit that criteria could bear some more of the burden of the trash pickup for the whole community? And people who do have smaller use and lower income wouldn't have to spend as much on it? Was that, is that something that we can even figure out or do? I, I just was thinking out loud, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, traditionally, Louisville in general has provided funds to Sister Carmen, and then they offer a needs assistance program for utilities in general. So that would also apply to not just trash, but like, water sewer bills. That's what we've traditionally done. It's something we can explore more in depth. I wouldn't recommend, we, the current contract provides for special needs assistance to have rollout service for special needs. I think currently out of roughly 6,000 accounts using trash, there's like 10 people that have that service. Uh, so we can dive into that thought, but I don't think it's a a large topic to muddy this RFP with.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question on the composting. Uh, since A1 Organic has stopped accepting compostable paper products, is there another place that we could request they take compost so that they would accept compostable paper products?
There's not really a lot of options. A1 is kind of the game in town where all the haulers go. Um, I would say not at this point in time. It's something we can continue to explore, but I would not um want to put anything in that as a requirement. Now, what we do write into the contract is that we have to agree to the composter that the hauler uses. Uh, and we can use that as part of our discussions with these vendors is are there other opportunities in A1? If so, we'd like to explore that with you. Um, you know, I don't want to put it in RFP that we don't want to use A1. I don't think that's good business, but we can certainly through negotiation figure out if there's other alternatives.
Okay. And then the other question I have or comment is, do you have any idea if there was any significant impact on the amount of trash that we collected based on uh the reusable bag tax?
Uh, I don't think there's been, I mean, nothing noticeable in our tonnage measurements. We're, I mean, bags are whatever, tenths of a pound and we're measuring in tons, 2,000 pounds at a time, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, so I I agree with all of the alternates you have in here. I think the the one piece of feedback, as I recall from our earlier discussion that we've heard loud and clear from the community is that the current customer service situation is um not up to everyone's expectation. Is there a way to add an alternate or make it part of one of these? Um, to at least give the opportunity for enhanced customer service proposals? Like, um, I think our current contract has a a dedicated Colorado staff person type requirement. I I would just love to communicate through the RFP that that's something we're interested in hearing about. Um, whether there's metrics they can attach to it or a dedicated personnel or, you know, something that's an improvement over the the call center issues we've been having. I I think we've heard from the community is really important.
Yeah, we uh instead of having that an alternate, uh, we kind of built that into the criteria. We envision making that part of the selection process. And instead of trying to uh specify exactly what we want and then constantly like try, try to get that vendor to deliver that, th- this is a challenge. Like, in a world where we would have 10 companies competing on this and they all want our business and we get this really great value and then they deliver to the contract specs, that is a world I'd love to live in. The world I, we live in is that we might get two vendors, maybe three. They're all going to show up and say they can provide the perfect service based off how we've written it into the contract. I think what we're going to do is say in the proposal, um, propose what your communications plan is going to be. Propose how you're going to provide great customer service according to these standards and then see what we get from them and see what price they provide to that. I think that if a company says they can provide locals' customer service, but then they can't, they're going to have to say that in the proposal and then that is something that we can select on when we see what the costs are associated with that decision. Does that help?
Yeah, it does. Let me just elaborate a little bit on on what my thinking is, which is, I I do want to see a little bit the the optionality, right? I want to see i- if they have that dedicated Colorado person or that enhanced customer service proposal, um, how is that affecting the price? Right, I think that's important information to have versus just seeing what the sort of standard proposal is and not understanding how the proposal impacts the price. And I don't, I don't necessarily want to require it, but I just want the RFP to communicate that if there is that option, right, to have a higher level of service, we'd like to understand, is it, is it $5 a household a month? Is it $10 a household a month? What are we talking about in terms of cost benefit to get the level of service that we've heard is is desired?
Okay, um, so I think I'd probably add an alternate five that is a guaranteed local customer service. And then we'd have to attach large penalties to that. But if that didn't play out over time, we would incur those penalties on the provider, at which point you may eliminate a partner from the future. But that would be kind of a route that we could take.
Yeah, I mean, I'll defer to you on how to do it and certainly interested in comments from my colleagues. But I I think it would be nice to at least en- encourage the the presentation of of customer service as an option at maybe a higher level than than what's standard.
I think one one other, I I'm not sure uh an alternative five is necessarily the way to go. I will leave that to minds that are a lot smarter on this stuff than mine, which is to say, yours, Director. But it seems to me that we can, you know, one, one way of doing this too is to just build in some sort of incentive and disincentive. I mean, I I don't know whether we can do that, but I mean, it would be nice. They could propose, if they wanted to, some kind of of incentive uh program. I don't know, again, how that would affect price. Um, I also would be, you know, nervous about putting that in the, in the hands of, you know, it'd have to be uh objective enough to be able to, for for you to be able to evaluate when those uh incentives or disincentives um or, you know, penalties, whatever. But I I think uh Councilmember Hefner raises a really important point because that's something that we did get. I I wonder if you, and we went over this some months ago, um, if you wouldn't mind pointing out a couple of the highlights of the public engagement is that we got, what kinds of issues were the most important, apart from um, apart from the customer service?
Um, public engagement as far as like what, what kind of flyers are going out?
Well, what, what feedback?
Uh, customer service, customer survey engagement, yeah. Um, I think the gist is if you, so we're talking about Republic Services, that's our current hauler, uh, in all transparency. And I think if you just have normal service and you don't have special calls in, uh, generally bins are picked up on a, on a reliable basis. We've not had issues with routine service. I think when people call in, maybe there's misses and they want the truck to come back to get the mess. There's been issues with picking up misses in some people's um opinions or you call in to schedule a bulk pickup or some other special service. Um, that customer experience has not been good. And it seems like that's just a pattern with Republic. Um, Republic did sign up for a contract that was supposed to have all local customer service per our requirements. And we've struggled to get that service from them. I would say probably 70 to 75% of the calls are locally served and then there's 25% at peak periods, uh, where I think that rolls over to a national call center. We've had breach of contract conversations with them around that and they've made, continually made adjustments. Um, but I feel like we're continually chasing that. And I think people are either going to be all local or they won't be. And you'll just have to see what that price difference is. Um, but I think uh if someone's not all local and they can't commit to that based off their company structure, I think it's tough for them to commit to a five-year contract with us and deliver on that, regardless of what they tell us. So I'm trying to accept some companies are going to be what they are customer service-wise and and some will be better customer service-wise. Um, I understand that customer service is the number one issue with this program right now. And we certainly see it as a staff of what we've, the customer service we received under the contract with Western Disposal versus the customer service that we received with Republic Services. Uh, so we acknowledge that as a staff. We see that in the program. I think you hear that in the community. And I think it just comes down to when we bid this contract, who's bidding and what are the costs? Um, and where's that value?
I've got a couple of other uh points. Um, one of them is uh I appreciate the the Greenhouse Gas offset piece of this. That's I I think a really important part that that I think the community wants. Um, one of the additional services that is listed is leave and branch pickup. That's been an important one, bulk pickup. Um, I wondered, and and I don't know how this is done. Uh, probably our sustainability manager maybe knows. But whether they have any kind of electronics or tough to uh dispose of kind of uh services, uh, that's something that may be worth asking. I mean, I, you know, I'm very sensitive to what you were saying, which is you don't want to make this so complicated and difficult that you discourage vendors from applying that. And and so I I do appreciate that, but it's not that hard to ask, you know, what kinds of things they do provide and then await them um accordingly when you get the responses back. Um, but I uh I appreciate, you know, I think this, this helps quite a bit. I um, and it sounds like, you know, the the one, uh, we talked a little bit about having fewer trucks through, uh, you know, the the one areas that if we moved, um, I mean, if we, if we increase compost to weekly, we're going to have, we're going to have more trucks.
That's correct. If you, if you increase those services, there'll be more trucks on the road.
You know, and that's, that's something, that's a judgment we'll have to make, I guess, when we get things back. Um, but anyway, that's all I have. Are there other comments? Yes, please.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to go back to the customer service topic. Um, and I hear you on trying not to go too narrow so we can cast a wider net as far as who we attract to this RFP. I'm sympathetic to the feedback we received to the community and I think my fellow council member here made some really great points. Um, you know, one of the things that I think would be helpful in the decision-making process is I'm not a customer service expert. I'm a user. Um, but I would like as a user to hear just three general steps that I think each could outline. We don't necessarily need to go into this amount of detail, but what I'm thinking in my head is like, not only what is your plan for customer service success, but how are you going to measure that success? That's something that's come up a few times in this conversation is we hear this, someone says that, but like, how do you actually measure it? But I think that is the keystone that's so important to then create the change, right? Step three, you reflect and then you adjust on your plan as you move forward. So I would love to hear those steps or some, some resemblance of that. Um, because that holds them accountable and helps us hold them accountable, I think. If there's some metrics of some sort that we can fall in it. I don't know what those are. I'm not the expert, but that's a gap that's been identified a few times tonight. I don't know. What are your thoughts about that, Director?
Um, yeah, I mean, absolutely. I agree, I agree with everything that's being said. Um, we get monthly reports from our vendor on um customer service exceptions, per se. I feel like Western Disposal, we got 25 to 60 exceptions a month and maybe Republic's anywhere from 40 to 80, maybe up to 100 a month, just depending on the month. Some months are busier than others. If there's a snowstorm, then obviously things get elevated. If it's just regular business, it's on the lower end. Um, and then we try to do a lot of follow-up when we hear a customer complain or you all pass along a customer to us to figure out uh where the truth is and all that. And it seems like um 75% of the time, Republic's dropping the ball. But that for us, from my perspective, I see that happen. Um, oh, maybe a couple of people every three months. So when we're picking up, um, we're picking up 15,000 bins per week over 6,000 accounts. And it's easy for these horror stories to to trickle up. And then we want to desire to buy the best and brightest and shiniest. Um, and at the end of the day, I think that sounds great. And and then we want to also provide all the customers in the city with the most value-oriented bill for trash, water, sewer, all the things that are inflating in life, everything's more expensive. Um, so I try to keep in mind that there's many things on a customer's bill and it's easy to get caught up in uh a small amount of people that want a very premium service when perhaps the majority of everyone are are getting what they need. It's a little different than what they want, but they're getting what they need. So that that would be my, and and I would say on metrics and reporting, um, this is a pass-through program. We don't have a person that manages this. It's actually me and a little bit of time from the finance department. We try to keep this very bare bones. So as we start adding in reporting and checks and metrics, um, I have a limited amount of time to to oversee this. And um, we would look at having to evolve the program internally as well, just to do more babysitting. So I I I guess in that, you know, it's probably better to get the premium if it's really that desirable.
Okay.
If that makes any sense.
Yeah, that's all super helpful. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Hey, Greg, do you see um like any consistency? We're, we're talking about customer service and and residents' concerns or I guess lack of service from uh currently from Republic. Is there a trend where there's a certain type of issue that doesn't get resolved more than others?
I think it's just how quickly callbacks happen on the customer service or if someone gets bounced from the local call center to national. And let's just use snow, for example. If you get bounced from local to a national call center and we're getting two feet of snow and trash is chaos that day, if there's a call center in Arizona, they have no idea. They're way out of touch, right? And so I think that's a big rift. Um, so that's a pattern. Like I said, some of these special things like uh customers schedule a bulk pickup and then there's a disconnect between the call center and the operations. And then that bulk pickup gets missed a couple of times, maybe just not just once. Um, yeah, and I guess just to try to represent both sides of the coin. I know just in general, through labor shortages, uh, Republic struggles to regularly staff like anybody. And then they're trying to rotate people through vacations. So another pattern is 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 they have staff churn or they're trying to fill vacations, then it's when a newer driver is on a route, the misses will happen. Um, you know, I I can honestly say when we had Western, we didn't have these types of things. But I also haven't worked with Western in five years. And so maybe Western is still the Western we knew or maybe if you hired Western and they were a premium and you think you're getting a premium, I don't know if they're still there. So those are the patterns I see.
On on that, on churn, I wonder if, you know, when you're, when you're doing the qualitative, I mean, you do some qualitative interviewing once they've submitted their bids. You know, I I I trust you're going to be asking questions like that to try to get at least some sense of apples to apples. Because it is one of those contracts, it's really hard to compare something now with one uh provider compared to what, you know, somebody did five years ago. Um, but anyway, I I it, do you have enough direction from us to, you know, we've, we've provided, I think, some, I I think, pretty consistent?
Um, Mayor?
Messages, yeah.
Before you provide direction, you need to take a public comment.
Yeah, that probably would be a good idea. Sorry about that. I'm still learning this job. Uh, yes, uh, uh, Mr.
Okay, I'm just going to be consistent and just keep talking. Thanks, Sherri Summer, Louisville. I really see this as a golden and wonderful opportunity, and I'll tell a little story to kind of illustrate why I think it's such a great opportunity. A few years ago, when my daughter was in high school, she was furious with me for something that was apparently my fault, and I was trying to reason with her, and my son said, "Mom, imagine a person riding an elephant, an enraged elephant. You're trying to talk to the person. You can't, it's not going to work. The elephant is enraged, and you just can't. This is, this is not a situation you can go into." And strangely enough, trash collection is a really, it's a really dear-to-people's-heart issue, and we really saw that when we changed trash collectors last time. And as we said, we haven't worked with Western for a while, but I really do think that people remember, they'll remember that this was really important. I think there's a lot of non-monetary things that go into why people feel so strongly about the trash collecting. I think it's like, hey, we're supporting a local business, we're supporting people who live in our communities, we're supporting a business model that is maybe more family-run. I don't know if, like, I'm dealing with facts here or not, you'd know, but these are the feelings that people have, these are the feelings I had, and that's the reason why I, at that time, said I really think we should stick with Western, even though we could save a few bucks. As far as the customer service, like, even when there was, I was on the campaign trail, I knocked on someone's door, and somebody had asked her, you know, "Why didn't you choose, why didn't you choose Western?" And she got kind of a weird answer, which I won't repeat, because it's like, you know, one person to one person to another person, but I was like, how could that be? So I actually called them, and I was like, she wondered why they didn't get the contract. And they said, you know, "We would love to have that contract. We would just love, more than anything else, to get back into Louisville." And just that interaction that I had with that person reminded me why, one reason I really value interacting with people, and that's because they care and because they make, they humanize the situation. Like, everything we do is very dehumanizing. And even like, I'm not saying your presentation was dehumanizing, but like, the first thing that you mentioned was, you know, "We need to provide value for your dollar." I don't, I think in a situation like this, that should not be the first priority. I mean, if it's like $60 extra a month, yes, but I think on things like this, we have to have a different calibration for what our priorities are, and to remember, being treated as a human, being listened to, and being able to communicate are really priceless in this world that is pretty heartless a lot of the time. Thank you.
Do we, looks like we have two comments online.
Yes.
Tamar Krantz?
So I'll call on Tamar first. Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Tamar Krantz. I live in Louisville. And I wondered if you could hear me? Oh, it looks like you got the countdown up, so you must be hearing me. Okay, great. I really appreciate the concerns about customer service and that, in the alternatives, that we've included those premium alternatives that include EVs or GFG offsets. And I really appreciate what staff said about letting companies explain in their proposals how they'll provide excellent customer service rather than telling them how to provide it. Thank you, Councilmember Hamilton, for emphasizing the need for using metrics to measure the success in that area. I would also love to see something in the RFP that addresses environmental concerns. We should ask the companies to explain how they will reduce waste, reduce emissions, and guarantee safe disposal, and how they'll quantify that for the city. I don't know if this is included in the RFP under additional services, but Mayor Lay said it might include, additional services might mean leaf collection and electronic waste collection. So if not, I think that should be added as one of the RFP criteria. Based on the chart in the presentation, it doesn't seem like there was a criteria for waste and emissions reductions. So I'm wondering if you could ask them to propose how they will reduce emissions, reduce waste, and increase diversion? And then I have just two more quick questions for council and staff. I mean, one is, would it be possible for our sustainability staff to quantify the benefits of alternative four in terms of emission reductions and maybe waste reduction as well? Even a back-of-the-envelope calculation would be really useful so that you can understand the bang for the buck. I mean, I know we could see how that relates to the efforts that we're making in our municipal decarbonization plan, and we might find that, given the huge, that everybody in our whole city has trash, that this might be a significant way to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions for the city. For, and finally, actually for the community, not municipal decarbonization. But finally, I recommend, I would really recommend that staff visit the facilities. I think there's nothing like seeing an operation firsthand to see how the waste is handled, disposed, or recycled, because there's things, like, you know, you might see that might be concerned, and Louisville really doesn't want to be taking our waste to someplace where it's, you know, not being recycled or handled properly. So that's all I had to say. Thank you very much for taking my comment.
Thank you. Mr. Cooperman?
Hi. This is Josh Cooperman. I live in Louisville. I would like to make two sets of brief comments. The first, I feel like really hasn't been touched on. I have always considered trash collectors to be very essential workers. You know, it's not exactly a glamorous occupation, but if no one came to pick up your trash, I think we would be pretty upset about that for a variety of reasons. And so I would suggest that, if possible, when considering bids, it'd be great if we considered how the trash collectors were compensated. You know, again, it's not a glamorous or particularly skilled occupation, but it's really essential, and I think that that kind of work should be adequately compensated. You know, given that we'll only get a couple of bids, it might be difficult to take that into consideration, but I think it is worthwhile thinking about. My second set of comments, of course, are about sustainability. First of all, I would echo Tamar Krantz's comments about asking certain questions about bids, in particular about, you know, how they ensure that the material they collect is recycled or composted and stuff like that. I think that's an important question to ask. If it's possible to get electric trash trucks, that would be great, but again, I think it just depends on whether or not the companies that bid could offer us that option. And so finally, you know, since City Council doesn't consider trash and waste too frequently, I just wanted to say a few words about diversion and reduction. I think we should always keep in mind ways, or trying to think of ways that we can reduce the amount of waste and divert waste that the city is producing. And it's not exactly easy to do that just through our trash contract, but I think it's a good opportunity to think about ways that we could do that. So for instance, it would be great if we could find some kind of revenue stream that would allow for things like education, more education about what can be recycled and what can be composted. For instance, a great program would be to have randomized audits of people's trash, where people go out there, look at the trash, and then they report to the people about how they could do better in terms of reducing or diverting their waste. And if we had some way to fund that, for instance, by charging more for large trash containers, that would be a really nice thing. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cooperman. Any, let's, any other public comments? Looks like none. Why don't we go back to council comments, questions? Go ahead. Member Tim?
Yeah. I think there's been a good conversation. Of course, we're not selecting our hauler today. I think there's a little bit of, you know, potentially trying to, not maybe intentionally, but trying to pick our hauler with our RFP, right? Like, you know what we want, and then we put that out there, and we make sure we get it right. So an example of that is, like, you need to be locally owned. Like, okay, well, we know who we're going to get, right? So I think the point is to put it on RFP that does match what our priorities are. And I think everyone's mentioned really good pieces about, I don't really disagree with any of the things that are out there. One piece that I do think is important is understanding and how you're going to help us evaluate, and I brought this up a year ago, but, you know, the cost of change. I think one thing that happened with the new hauler is that things changed. Your day changed, the driver changed, all these things changed, and change is hard, even as on the campaign trail, and like, the colors of the cans were a big deal. And so change is change, right? And so there's a cost to change that is real. And I think this one, you know, we'll see what comes back. I think people, you know, might be more willing to have this change than the last change. But I think that it's worth at least understanding what that difference is. I know it's like 99% on them to communicate with all their new customers, if they are a new vendor, but just what is that cost of change for us as a community? And does that, you know, make their proposal better or worse? Again, one day a week, five days a week, I think there's, you know, multiple days a week, there's some pros and cons. Of course, for me, my trash gets picked up one day a week. And so, you know, like, I get that there's a difference for the community in changing that, but I think you made some points, Kurt, that I think are important. I think the majority of residents don't have strong opinions about the haulers. Like, I have strong opinions, like Josh, about hauling trash in general, but I like all of my haulers who put little gifts on our trash can during the holidays. But like, the people that work at these companies are people, no matter which company they work for, and they come and they pick my trash up every week, and I haven't called the trash company in 13 years. I haven't had an issue in 13 years with either company, you know, Western or Republic. I'm one of those that's like, oh, I'm not paying attention to this if I'm not on council, right? Like, whatever they did, just tell me what to do. But I think it is true that some people do care deeply about this, and there is an opportunity for us to talk about important things, because it's a five-year contract, it's, you say, $7 million over five years. It's a lot of money, and I think the piece that was alluded to a little bit, but I want to hit again, is we're making a choice, this is like a chosen monopoly. We're making a choice for what it's going to cost for people to get their trash hauled. They can't then, they can choose their size, but they don't get to say, ooh, you know, I actually would prefer the less expensive one. So we're making a choice for everybody, and that doesn't mean we should choose the cheapest or the, like, it's just complicated, because I think most people that don't care aren't going to talk to us about it. It's kind of how it works. But I'm excited for this RFP to go out and see what comes back, and hopefully we do have three offers, and hopefully they are competing for our business, and hopefully there are some special things like leaf pickup or otherwise that are cool add-ons, but looking at that final price and trying to analyze all of those pieces, that's the bigger conversation, right? This is sort of like, go get them, Kurt, get some good stuff back. But I think, I like what the additions that people brought up as far as, you know, other questions to ask.
Just a few, go ahead, sorry. A few closing points, because I heard a pattern of a couple different comments and suggestions. So want to just, well, we've got influencers here on the topic. So our recycling goes to the Boulder County Recycling Facility, and we have an IGA, the city has an IGA with the recycling facility. And so the hauler as far as recycling is just a means to get it from A to B. They don't have any ownership in that. As we discussed, the compost piece, they will, we will approve the composting facility that it goes to. As far as trash, a lot of these haulers are just hauling. Republic happens to be a company that also owns the landfill, but there are days Western goes to the same landfill as Republic. So those types of things are limited. We do have the Boulder County Hazardous Materials Facility, and that's a surcharge that people pay on their bills, so you can go drop off those hard-to-recycle items. And then we are doing, once or twice a year, we have started doing an electronics event along with the hard-to-recycle or hazardous materials items through our sustainability coordinator. So Kayla's been running those events, and those are paid for through surcharges that we charge for that extra-large trash can. So when, if you have 196 trash can, and then you're getting the next 32-gallon trash can, not recycled or compost, but just trash, it may only cost $3 for that second trash can, but we're charging 14, so that difference, we're using that towards education and these programs. So I think there's a lot of good suggestions we receive, and I just want to make sure people also know that we are, we're doing a lot of these things already. So thanks for your time and the feedback, and we'll see what we come back to you with.
Yeah. Let me add one other thing, because I think this is something that many don't know in the community, but we've had problems in the past with some companies not completing fully the RFP, or their response to the RFP. Some even that we could have disqualified in the process. So I think I've mentioned this to, well, you provided that information, we don't need to go into any more detail than that. But those, I presume that, you know, you'll take steps to remind each of the folks who are going to be responding to the RFP that they need to get the thing done for us to be able to evaluate it. And that's really important, because I think sometimes in a lot of, this is a very big contract, but in contracting generally that you do, sometimes folks complete what you want, and sometimes they don't, and you have only so much leeway when you're trying to be fair and you're a public entity, to be able to consider something. So I urge, you know, this is, to the extent any of them might be listening, hope that they'll do what they need to do to respond to us. So, anyway, thank, if you've got everything that you need, I think good suggestion, good public comments, and appreciate, this is a huge deal. We know that it's a huge deal, and we know that five minutes after the decision is made, or five minutes after whatever happens, happens, we'll certainly get contacts from our constituents about the decision. So we appreciate all of the burden that that places on you to do a really phenomenal job. Thanks. Thanks. Okay. Why don't we do? I tell you what, why don't we take a break right now for about five minutes and then come back? Because I know this next item is going to be a biggie. So it's, I have 7:47, let's come back at about 7:52. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro-Town, Members of City Council. Happy New Year. I'm Cameron Foltz. I'm the city engineer. And we also have online Paulina Bennett, the Director of IT, to answer any questions you have. I'm going to do a quick introduction, go over a few things, and then I'm going to turn it over to the Intrepid Fiber folks, and they'll do a presentation, and then we'll all be here for questions and comments. So about a year ago, we were, staff was contacted by Intrepid Fiber requesting a revocable license agreement to install fiber to the home within all of Lewisville for the residents. So over the last year, we've been working with Intrepid Fiber through their revocable license agreement, with our legal team, their legal team, construction details, what are you guys going to be installing, a lot of the details at that point. So the map I brought up here is in your packet, and it shows our current city fiber network, which is the solid green, and then the dash green is a future connection that we're trying to do from the city services facility over to the wastewater plant. And then it's kind of hard to see on the screen, but all the black dots with the yellow highlights are facilities that we worked through the agreement that we're going to get connections to that we currently don't have. So eight facilities total. We're also getting a city-dedicated two-inch conduit from our library all the way out to the north-end lift station. So all in all, we're getting one mile of city conduit and city fiber, and then four-and-a-half miles of shared fiber within their network. Here's Exhibit B of the agreement, which kind of shows a little bit more detail. So the red is the city pathways that we'll be sharing with Intrepid Fiber along with the details to the, each location, basically. So those locations include lift stations, pump stations, traffic signals, parks, golf course, and the rec center. So through the agreement, the city's going to recognize savings, if approved, of somewhere between $250,000 and $500,000 in construction costs. So rather than the city going out and installing all these connections ourselves, we're pairing with Intrepid Fiber to get these connections in. It's also less disturbing for the residents because they're, we're just tearing up the area once to do the construction rather than Intrepid going in and installing their fiber, and then the city going in later and installing a second fiber network. After the agreement is approved, or if it's approved, we're going to control detailed information through our right-of-way permit process. So Intrepid's going to submit detailed construction drawings for staff review. That'll include traffic control plans, and then our right-of-way permits will also govern things like utility locates, potholing, and just anything else that our right-of-way permits currently cover. So I think that's it from staff's perspective, from my introduction. I'm going to turn it over to Intrepid for their presentation, and then we'll be here for questions. Okay, I'm sorry about that. At the top there. All right. There you guys go. Thanks.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. I'm Shane Peverell with Intrepid Fiber Networks, VP of Business Development, joined by Eric Voss, who is Director of Market Expansion. Thank you for having us. Really excited to be working with the city of Lewisville with Cameron and yourselves to deploy next-generation fiber-to-the-home network. A little bit about Intrepid. We were founded in 2021 by Brookfield Asset Management. We're an owner-operator of fiber-to-the-home networks using an open-access model. We're based out of Broome Field, so we're right next door. Our model and our framework is very similar to what you find in Europe. So you have one owner of the infrastructure, you have multiple internet service providers that are able to offer their service. So you get a, you get a network or an infrastructure that's built once where multiple ISPs can provide service. I'll explain in a little bit why that's a great thing to have. A little bit about our sponsor, Brookfield. So they are one of the world's largest investors in infrastructure. It's a great partner to have, extremely stable. We can look to them instead of outward for financing for any capital that we need. In addition, they provide a wealth of knowledge and experience to help guide us, help our deployment process. And a little bit about wholesale open-access networks. So like I mentioned, it's one infrastructure, one fiber cable route where multiple internet service providers can offer their service. So for the municipality, as Cameron mentioned, you don't want to tear up your municipality multiple times. So this allows us to come in, hopefully not use the word tear up, hopefully use the word construct and restore appropriately. So it aligns incentives for all parties. The end ISP is able to focus on the consumer experience. Heard you and your waste disposal where consumer experience or customer service was a big hot topic. So this allows ISPs to focus on the consumers rather than constructing. It's very tough and difficult to do both. And the municipality is armed with a future-proof fiber optic network where residents and small businesses can enjoy symmetrical speeds. Right now, we offer up to two gigabyte service, and we're able to expand our network up from there. And for the consumers, you get choice. You get flexibility, reliability, and you also get a more competitive price choice than just with one or two incumbents. And some key milestones, as I mentioned, we were founded in 2021, but we've come a long way since then. We've actually executed our first wholesale ISP agreement with T-Mobile, who is operating under T-Fiber. We've broken ground in Pueblo, Colorado, in North Glenn within the span of a year. So that was in November of 2022. And we actually activated our first subscriber in May of '23. Since then, we've activated a few hundred more. We've also broken ground in Minnesota in Q3 of this year, or last year, sorry, I'm still in '23. We also have a great team of seasoned executives. So while we're a startup in nature and by duration, we have a CEO in Jack Waters, who has been CTO at Level 3 and COO at Zale Group. We also have David Cooper, who comes from Lumen Global Crossing, Tim Bruni, our CFO, who comes from Lumen and CenturyLink, Jeff Platchek, who also comes from Lumen and CenturyLink, Christopher Marsh, our CIO, and Shane Peverell, myself. And so what's great about this seasoned team is they've done it before. It's not a new team that has no experience in this realm or this industry. Our team brings a diverse experience, and we're able to think through the tactical problems today and also provide solutions and ability to think about what we need tomorrow and what our communities that we do interact with also need in the future. We have construction right now in six markets, two in Minnesota, in St. Cloud and Bloomington, and we have four here in Colorado. I mentioned Pueblo and North Glenn, but we also have Westminster and Littleton. And it's good to mention that all of these builds are staffed with a local presence. So while we do engage in local, using local contractors, engineering, construction firms, we do staff with our own employees to make sure there's proper oversight throughout the duration of the build. I'm going to turn it over to Eric to talk a little bit more about our build plan as well.
Okay. Hi, how's everybody doing? This is Eric Voss, like I said. So as far as the network itself, we are planning to construct to approximately 7,000 homes in Lewisville, and that'll be about 146 miles. It's 12% aerial and 88% underground network planned, and the breakdown of the homes and multifamily units that we'll be providing service to is approximately 97% single-family and 3% multi-dwelling. There's just not a lot of multi-dwelling units in the area. And then as far as the installation methods, we will utilize aerial where we can, where there are existing utility poles, and underground where there are not or where it's just not suitable. And our preferred method for underground is using directional boring. We will use open cut to add in vaults and handholds, and the installation includes up to four conduits, the three-quarter inch conduits, and we'll be constructing to all the homes, like I showed in the previous slide. And as far as the build plan itself, this kind of outlines on the, the map on the right outlines where we're, roughly how we plan to schedule the work, starting in the area that's labeled one in the, sort of the top right, and then progressing south from there. And our goal is, or our plan is to construct neighborhood by neighborhood. It takes approximately two months to build a neighborhood, and then we move on to the next one, making sure that each neighborhood is properly restored and ready to move on to the next areas. And then as far as the city of Lewisville connectivity that Cameron kind of already touched on, there's eight different routes, and seven of them are planned to be fiber, and the one is a two-inch conduit along, I think it's Courtesy Road. And this just kind of outlines how the Lewisville network will compare to the Intrepid network. This is a rendering or picture of an OLT cabinet or optical line terminal cabinet. What this is, this is really the only structure that is above ground in our build plan. It's approximately, well, as it shows there, about two and a half feet by two and a half feet by four feet tall, and this serves up to 8,100 homes. So that would cover, one of these covers the entirety of Lewisville. And so we typically strategically place this in an area where it's less obtrusive to the public and kind of out of the way. Usually we try and frame it in areas where we see other cabinets of similar style, call And then I'll turn it back over to Shane to go over community.
So we have an extensive community notification and outreach plan. We're prideful in our outreach, and we understand that who we're building to are truly the residents, right? Everybody lives in these communities where we build. We want to make sure we inform, educate all the residents, and they truly know and can expect what we'll, what we will be doing. So the first thing that we do is we create an information hotline that Intrepid owns and mans. We also have a website that has detail around our deployment, so construction methodologies, what to expect. We also do door hangers. So in advance of construction, we'll leave a door hanger for the residents so they can have those hotline and website info lines to reach out to. We also do yard signs. With our contractors, we also do a ton of signage and branding so they understand who we are and what we're doing. So when our contractors show up to site, they know it's for Intrepid, they know it's a fiber optic network that they're building. We leave with the residents restoration instructions, and as I touched above, a project website with FAQs. I'll touch a little bit more on our door hangers. So they're directly placed on each door in advance of construction, ideally within 48 to 72 hours. One, so the resident doesn't forget about it, that it's, it's top of mind, and it's and it's not weeks or months in advance. And two, so they have the information if anything does happen, that they can reach out to us directly. This is just a snippet of our website, but we have information on here, like I mentioned, about how we construct, what we do, and who to contact if there just so happens to be a problem. We have also introduced lawn signs and A-frames. These are placed at the entrance and egress of neighborhoods just to bring an additional piece of awareness to the residents about what is going on. So when they see trucks and vehicles show up in their neighborhood, they understand exactly what's going on and who we are and who they can contact. We also have an extensive issue response and resolution program. I mentioned a hotline, but we have a ticketing system that will log all of our online and phone issues. And we target a response within 24 hours, a positive response out to the resident to make sure that they know we have heard them, that the issue is logged, and we hope to close the resolution within 48 to 72 hours. So within 24 hours, we want to make contact and we want to ensure a timely resolution and repair those items or any items that need to. That was the end of our presentation and happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I think I have a couple of questions for you guys and then maybe one or two for staff. So I'll start at the end and go backwards. You just mentioned restoration instructions. Can you tell us what that means?
Yeah, so it details how we restore sod, concrete, asphalt. With the sod instructions, it's how frequent you should water when an area is re-sodded. So just goes over what methods we use in different types of environments.
And when you say how frequently you should water, is that you or is that the homeowner?
That is the homeowner.
Okay. So you're potentially doing work in easements that, you know, in somebody's front yard or whatever the case may be, digging up some grass and then leaving instructions about how to water what's been put back?
Right. Well, we'll repair and restore as we found it, or better than, hopefully better than, as we found it. But there will be instances where we will leave sod and it's not, I guess, operationally feasible to come back and water that on a consistent basis. So we will leave good new sod to replace the grass that was there. However, we do ask that the resident will water that sod to keep it.
Thank you. That's helpful. And then on the above-ground cabinets, can you give us a sense of how many of those go in?
There's just one in Lewisville that we'll install. It covers 8,100 homes roughly.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that, those little gray boxes aren't going to pop up in everybody's neighborhood? There's just one?
No, there's just one. All of our other infrastructure from an underground environment, as the name implies, is underground. But there will be handholds that will be surface level or flush with the ground, so they won't be visible and they won't be blocking any residents' view.
Great. And then as far as sort of putting holes in pavement and sort of disrupting street, disrupting traffic, how much of that is going on? Give us a sense of, with the directional drilling, I mean, how many holes are you cutting in the streets?
Yeah, we hope to avoid open cuts as much as possible. One, because it's more costly and timely for us. Two, it creates a longer restoration timeline and a more difficult restoration. With a typical street crossing, if we need to daylight utilities, it could be one utility that we daylight, or it could be four to six utilities. And those would be an 8 to a 12-inch core that we would use to daylight that utility as we cross the street. So the answer is it varies.
Okay.
But it's typically an 8 to a 10-inch core or hole that we will remove and replace.
And is that the extent of what's going on with the pavement? You don't need to make a big hole to get the...
Yeah, with directional drill, it avoids the majority of open cut. There will still be instances where it's not feasible to directional drill, do the length or complexity. So we will have to open cut and will restore as per the city standards.
And can you, and this might be a question for staff versus you, can you give us a sense of what those standards are?
Sure. So any potholes that are done in concrete, so whether it's sidewalk or a crosspan or anything like that, that has to be replaced from joint to joint so we don't allow filling in of those with concrete. And then we have a specific requirement for potholes that are done in asphalt. So you use the original core, you fill it with a granular material, and then seal it on the top.
Great. And I think I, just a couple more. And I'm not sure if this is for staff or for you all. For the city infrastructure, there's the one section that's just going to be conduit and then a number of sections that are going to have the fiber. Can you just give us a sense of what sort of the theory is there or what's the reason for that?
Yeah, so our goal is that, as we have, and sorry, my name is Paulina Bennett. I'm Director of IT for the city of Lewisville. The goal is that we could follow along with their path and utilize the conduit for future use as we need it. So where they are laying fiber strands, we're asking that they use a certain amount of fiber strands for us as well. And then where they are not, we're asking that they lay fiber or lay conduit so that we can use it at a later time to connect our ring.
So that the conduit sections aren't fiber that we need today. It's for some future need?
It's for future need, correct.
Okay. And then last question for staff, which is, at least for me, this is the first time I'm seeing this. Was there a, how did we end up with Intrepid versus another provider? Is this the only proposal we've received? Was there any sort of process? Did it come to us?
They basically came to us with a request. You know, we haven't had any other providers come to us with a similar request. And they come to us, we go through legal on the agreement, and then ultimately end up here with you guys to discuss it. So we don't search out anybody or anything like that. So this was all driven from Intrepid contacting staff, so.
Great, thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you. I have a few questions. I'm going to label them as Marshall Fire, Aerial, and my last one was RFP. I'll start with that, since you just kicked that off, Councilmember Hefner. I too was wondering why we decided on this particular vendor for no other reason than it seems like in other instances we have RFPs go out to compare the vendors. So that's something I'd like to discuss further as a group. The 12% aerial, I, you know, especially after our experiences with the Marshall Fire and having utilities above ground, I was wondering, is there a reason why this wasn't discussed as an opportunity? I know it escalates this project hugely, but is this not an opportunity to start burying some lines in Old Town as well? I'll stop there to answer that question before I go into the Marshall Fire one.
Okay, so with the Intrepid folks, so again, they're operating a private network. So for, again, they're having T-Mobile be their network, and then we're just piggybacking on some of those fiber strands. So we didn't go out and select them, or, again, they're requesting to have a revocable license agreement because they're a telecommunications company to provide this service for the residents. So it's not, the city's not providing this service. So it's a private entity providing Internet service through, for the residents. And then as far as the aerial, we haven't really looked at undergrounding pieces for the aerial. We do have provisions in the agreement that if it makes sense, like if we know we're going to bury something or underground something, we do have some discretion in the agreement to make them go underground versus aerial, if it makes sense.
If I may follow up on Cameron's comments. So the revocable license agreement is necessary for them to have the legal right to put their infrastructure in city rights of way and easements. So it's not a service that the city is contracting to receive, but rather it's a business that wants to come into the city and offer its services to end users. And the way that they do that is through the city's rights of way. And so they need legal permission from you for the legal right to be there. And that's the revocable license agreement.
Okay, that's very helpful. And then my last question slash comment regarding the Marshall Fire. So when I was looking at the map of the planned stages, it was like 1 through 22 or something like that. It looks like it's going to start kind of in the north Old Town-ish area. And actually, some of the Marshall Fire areas were, I think, later on to be completed. And I'm curious why it wasn't maybe like flipped, since there's active construction going on there and everything's already torn up, rather than people having laid new sod and new concrete and everything else and then say, oh, we're coming in to lay some network fiber and conduits. What was the thought process behind that?
Here, I'll jump in. So what they've provided is their initial phasing plan. So we haven't really had a chance to comment on what the phases are. That's something we can certainly work with Intrepid on if we want to try and get in the Marshall Fire area, maybe in an earlier phase. But I do know they're working through, if you saw the other map, I think they're moving through from Lafayette, moving their way kind of east to west.
Okay.
So it may not make sense, construction-wise, for them to start on the west side. But we can certainly work with Intrepid on that and see.
Okay. So those were my comments thus far. I appreciate the clarification about this is a business coming in town, trying to provide their services, and they have to do it through these construction means. With that being said, it is very, or how should I put this? It is not your typical means of introducing a business in the community, right? It has quite a bit of disruption, and I appreciate the efforts to restore. But I'm also, I'm just a little unsure, even though they're a business coming into town to provide a service, given how intrusive that is, just the lack of an RFP and how important the service is to our community. I still need some discussion around that with my fellow council members. I'll leave it at that.
I had a couple of questions. I certainly have that concern too. And I recognize you guys, I appreciate your coming and making the proposal that you've done. Because we're kind of talking around you or talking about you in the third person. But I, and I don't know how, you know, according to our procurement policies, how this fits in. But we typically, you know, I mean, this is one business. You know, and it's a sole provider of this. And I guess I would expect we would have gone through another process, or at least an additional process. And I don't know, I don't know why that, or whether that is even a possibility at this point. But I'm more interested in whether it's required under the procurement policies, that we do an RFP.
It is not, because it's not a procurement. And this license agreement is not exclusive to Intrepid. So there being in the rights of way where they're requesting permission to be does not limit any other company from also using the rights of way.
Gotcha. It's still, obviously, they need permission to do what they're doing and we're trying to go through that process of evaluating it. And I'm, you know, my frame of reference on this is Section 2 of the resolution, which is that, you know, there's further negotiation to be done. I get that. But it's, it's subject to essential terms and conditions being unaltered, right?
Right.
And can you tell us a little bit more about what that means?
Sure. Section 2 of the resolution is standard language that is included in pretty much all of your resolutions that approve agreements. And the reason why we include Section 2, which authorizes the mayor to negotiate and execute revisions to the agreement that are determined to be reasonable or necessary for the protection of the city, is just that after you all approve an agreement, if we find a typo, if we realize, for instance, with the Superior IGA, that that percentage had been calculated incorrectly and not in the city's favor, we want to be able to fix that. It does not authorize the mayor to approve amendments to the agreement once it's executed. It's really just intended to allow for minor revisions that don't, that aren't substantive and don't affect the essential terms and conditions.
Fair enough. And that's...
And it's standard.
Yeah. No, I'm sure that it is. It makes the decision, though, potentially critical. One of the things that struck me, and maybe I am missing something here, but there's an Article 4, which is fees and other consideration. And fees is a defined term, but it's not defined anywhere, and there's no number or percentage attached to it. Is there some reason for that? I'm looking on page 5 of the agreement, but it's page 135 of the PAC. And just also, I mean, up in the, I looked up in the definitions too, and it doesn't appear to be defined up there.
So typically, through a license agreement, we would have fees through the installation of the infrastructure, through our right-of-way permitting, as far as those types of fees. Those would be our traditional fees. We're not currently considering additional fees through this agreement with Intrepid. Historically, around this topic, the city has studied the desire to provide broadband-type services or gig network. And the city, and I'm translating because this is not a public works-led effort. It was a previous IT-led effort, and we've got some transition. So Paulina's on the presentation here, but she wasn't here when those things occurred. But the city did explore, provide its own type of broadband utility and kind of determined that wasn't feasible for various reasons at that point in time. And so the city's just kind of taken a passive role in that. And as companies come forward, such as like a Zale, that might be running fiber through our city for like the school district or Intrepid, they need this license agreement to go underground under our roads. And so we have these license agreements. And so we've had a position of, oh, a more, oh, by the way, while you're installing these infrastructure, we also, along this route, need these types of connections made in lieu of various things. So essentially, that's kind of the whole topic of this, is Intrepid happens to be a company that wants to come into this area and do business. And we're not suggesting that they shouldn't do business, but we're saying, while they're doing business, we'd like them to also get some things done that were in our capital plans as a trade-off. Could these things have been, could we have gone about this a more public way and done some RFP that we want to invite people in? We could, but we just, as a city, didn't actively make those choices. So that's how we got here today.
Yeah, and I'm not, that helps a lot, and it helps to know. I don't know that that meets the concerns of the previous two council members who spoke. I guess my question is, you know, we're just kind of looking at the quid pro quo, right? Which I understand may be valuable to us, independent of where it's valuable to us for other reasons contained in the agreement. I just noticed that we're not charging a fee per this agreement. What you're telling me, if I'm understanding it, Director, is that there's still a right-of-way fee that's going to be charged separately, because that's what we do for everybody. And are we comfortable that if we do get another proposal like this, that we're... that we're, that that's going to be the same way we operate?
Yes, those are published fees for impacts to the infrastructure, such as open cutting a road and then patching back. And those fees are trying to recognize the impact to that road, the degradation of the life cycle of that road. We're not charging fees like per lane mile of fiber and negotiating some per lane mile of fiber type of fee.
And Kurt, are those the fees that are in Titles 12 and 15 of the code that are referenced in the section above? Article 4, Section 1? The mayor was asking about Article 4, Section 2. And I think perhaps that's just, I didn't personally work on this agreement with, with city staff. But I think that if fees were not capitalized there, I think that should be lowercase in Section 2, and Section should be Article. It's really talking about the Title 12 and 15 right-of-way permit fees that are referenced in that previous section.
Okay, thank you. Which is...
Does that sound right, Kurt?
I think so, yeah.
If that's right, that makes, that's one of those immaterial issues. Go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. I wonder, Kathleen, if you can tell us, I think we're sort of getting to this indirectly. As a telecommunications provider, Intrepid has some right to be in the right-of-way, right? I mean, we can't, we can't deny them the ability to put this into the right-of-way. Is that correct?
And we can't require that they obtain a franchise. Like Comcast is a franchised business within the city, and you get franchise fees. And so telecommunications companies, we cannot franchise.
Let me see if I can ask the question a different way. We're, I think what we're debating is sort of what are, what are the terms and conditions? Can we prohibit, could we, and not that, not that I want to. I think this is a great idea. But could we prohibit them entirely from being in the right-of-way? Or is that beyond our power?
That's a question that I don't feel comfortable answering off the cuff. But if it's an issue and the council's not comfortable, certainly research it. Again, I did not personally work on this agreement with the city staff, so haven't really dug into those issues.
Can I ask who did work on it?
Yes, Nick Cotton-Bias.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
Maybe a good way to approach tonight, given the conversation we're having, is let's just work through getting everyone's concerns. Let's not focus on an approval. We'll go do some more work so that we can come back and you can feel more comfortable that all your questions are answered. I think we are not experts in licensing telecommunications utilities. We acknowledge that. We're public works and utilities. We talk water, wastewater. So we'll work with our IT department, and we can come back with Intrepid and make sure you all have a comfort level with where this is at.
And I'll just say, I just, just because my questions may have been a little pointed. I'm just trying to get a sense of the context. I think that the substance, I mean, fiber, fiber to my house would be a welcome addition. And I'm sure a lot of people feel that way. And I think we're just trying to understand, how did this arise? What's the context? What's our role? What's sort of our level of discretion? What are the trade-offs? What are the, I mean, it seems like the city is getting a lot out of this deal. But it's hard to evaluate that without totally understanding what the alternatives might have been.
Yeah, I would, I would echo that. Because I think what you're hearing is, at least for me, a bit of ignorance about this kind of stuff. So to the extent that I'm asking these questions, I'm just trying to get a good sense of it because we haven't done this before. So at least to my recollection, in this way. So that's, that's it. Yeah, Kedla.
Yeah, I appreciate the line of questioning. Echo that we're all, we're all new to this, this piece. I guess my question would be like, if Company B comes in next month and says, we want to do the exact same thing. It's like, what, no, we already, we already have fiber. Like, so is it kind of first come, first served? I get why we didn't put this out. They came to us, they want to do this. We're looking really to be opportunists and say, ooh, hey, while you're under there, this would be great, and we can do a lot of things. And that's typical, I'm sure, with other municipalities, that like, as you do this, this is the shared benefit. You get access to the houses, and we get access to some fiber and some conduit and all that stuff. But yeah, like, I just don't understand. I can't even name your competitor, which is part of that ignorance. But like, you know, Extrepid comes in, in three months and says, we want to do the same thing. Are they going like through the same, I mean, it just never happens? Like, once you're here, why would another company come after you? And I guess anyone can answer it. But I think that's the concern, is that there's a better, a better company that we have no idea who it is, that's gonna offer an even better thing for us. And we don't have an opportunity to even hear from them because they're here and they're offering it, and we're done. So I guess that's my only, like, just understanding that better as to like what our options are. But I think, kind of like everybody's like, I mean, yeah, this is awesome. Happy to, happy to see this go through. But trying to learn at the same time how this process works.
If I can comment. I think one of the big benefits of the type of network we're building is it allows other internet service providers on it. So unlike traditional cable and phone companies, we are not closing off our network to anyone. We actually encourage that competition. So that is one benefit to the community. Hopefully, there will be nobody else that will choose to come in because our infrastructure will be here and they can offer service through it. So that's, that's one of the major benefits of what we're trying to accomplish.
Well, and again, so is Comcast an example of a company that will use your fiber? Or you're saying, what?
I think at one point in the future, they may. However, if they are the incumbent, they will want to use their own infrastructure for as long as they can.
Okay. So a competitor will, I mean, the way you guys make money is someone using your fiber. You're not the end provider of the internet service. So the idea is you lay down all this infrastructure, and someone goes, awesome, we will pay you for your work because we're gonna get all these customers. That's kind of how your system works.
That's correct, yes.
So I think, I mean, no one's gonna come in after this and lay down a second, you know, system of fiber. Maybe, I don't know. But it wouldn't seem necessary for another, you know, decade or when there's something way better.
So, pardon me, oh my God, this is insane. So we, to kind of, kind of comment on everyone. So the, the idea would be having new fiber optic cable provides, gives residents a great opportunity at having high-speed internet. And competition tends to drive price. So right now, pretty much like everybody, you want high-speed internet to your house? Xfinity's got your game. And, right, and what we're seeing, and we're seeing this, pardon me, in the Marshall Fire rebuild areas, right? So specifically, the west side of town already, is CenturyLink decided shortly after the fire that they wanted to go ahead and put their conduit, and they want to put theirs in. I don't know how, to the, and maybe you two could answer, the extent that CenturyLink is putting out through the whole city?
So their current work is just replacing infrastructure that they had within the Marshall Fire area, and it's, they're upgrading it.
I was saying, they're upgrading it, okay. So this would be, because you're already contracted, T-Mobile, I should say, has already contracted with you to use your cable, correct?
That's correct.
So this would allow immediately, basically, three vendors for the residents of Louisville. T-Mobile, CenturyLink, and Xfinity.
And just to comment on that, T-Mobile will be one of the internet service providers. I think in the future, we would hope to add additional, bring them into Louisville to create some additional competition.
Okay. So just from business perspective, you know, competition's always a good thing. It's usually good for the end user too, right? Brilliant business model, by the way, that in perpetuity, they, they're gonna keep paying you to use your lines. That's a great idea. So I had more specific comments beyond just the, the general. And I do really appreciate, Director, that we will not necessarily approve this tonight, but that we will revisit this and have greater detail legally and what have you. I just wanted to put in two things. What Councilmember Hoffner brought up, as far as like how you're gonna be doing, very familiar with the underground boring. A lot of the residents are now, especially since we've seen Comcast, Xcel Energy as well, and now CenturyLink coming through and doing this in all the neighborhoods. You have a planned facade. There's a lot of people now who are very water-conscious. And so they're doing things like very expensive underlayment and rock. And it might be specific expensive landscape. And I, and I understand, like, that's the city's right-of-way. You know, people are like, don't put a tree there, you know, things like that. But the rock instead of sod, is this something that your, that your employees or subcontractors would also be prepared to repair appropriately for the residents?
Yes, and one of the contractors we're hiring is Nixco. They're actually local to the Denver metropolitan area, so they've seen this type of environment before. It's not foreign to them. I think the first and foremost thing we try to do is avoid that. So find a spot in anybody's right-of-way or yard that we can avoid any landscaping, sod, concrete cuts, first and foremost. And then we try to restore it as well as it was before we got there.
Okay. There is something that I did not find. And hopefully, when we review the contract, maybe, again, we'll see if it's there, if not, add it in. We have seen in the last few months, and I think the rest of my council members have heard this too, plenty, issues with the underground lines that CenturyLink is putting in hitting power lines and causing damage, those power lines then. So not the contractor themselves didn't go to somebody's house and damage it, but damaging a power line sent a current to someone's home and actually damaged appliances. It caused a fire in the site of a couple of homes and newly rebuilt homes. And I just wanted to make sure, for the sake of the residents, that there is a protection in here, that there's assurance that you will make certain that that is made whole for them, that it's not a responsibility of the homeowner or their insurance company. And if your subcontractor is the one who is responsible because they're working for you, but that we, the city, as well as our residents, have a reassurance from you and in writing, that that will be at your cost or your insurance to make sure that any of that is made right.
I think we would have to look through that language first before we can agree to it here. Our goal is to leave safely and for everybody to go home at night for no property damage, for no homes lost. I think one of the most important pieces of what you talked about, where an underground utility was hit, is working with the local locating companies and understanding what their plan, their staffing is, really being in tune with Xcel and the other utilities in the area to try to avoid those hits if at all possible. So to avoid that hit, that's the number one goal of ours. And if there's any additional language, let's, let's work through it together to make sure that everybody is comfortable.
Perfect. And I do really appreciate the amount of community engagement from the residents who have already been impacted once, going through things and having to go through this again. I think knowing that your people will be there, who they are to talk to, having a hotline, thank you. That was something I think that was missing with CenturyLink when we had issues. Nobody knew who to call to help, help. The fact that you're gonna take ownership and say, yep, whatever we've done, call us and we'll help you guys out. That's the customer service component. This, I think, is super important. It's not always just pointing out the bad, it's pointing out the good too. So then lastly, it's a minor point, but I think it's one that a lot of residents will notice. I know there's only one of your OLT terminal cabinets. It looks like it's at Via Appia and Tyler. So pretty big intersection for us locally here. Lot of kids cross, lot of people ride their bikes around there. So people do engage in that kind of intersection. And it looks like the other one is, is on the northeast side of town, maybe right around Lafayette or so. Am I correct in my understanding of the map?
Yeah, and I think that's intended to serve Lafayette. However, it may be within the, the boundaries of Louisville.
Then my next request would apply to both. If there is a way for us, for you, not for us, sorry, for you to make those two boxes look more appealing. So they're not just some icky, big, giant gray box going in. Maybe they're wrapped with something, or they have a paint that, not a paint color, like gray or green, but I mean, they're painted with something artistic or that helps it to blend in. So it's not an eyesore, but instead it's something to look at. Would that be something you guys can do for us?
For sure. And we'll work with the city to make sure that is, it's what you need, what you want. We could engage with local artists or somebody in the community to help us with that as well, too. So we would love to make sure it's, it's beautiful in the city and it's not an eyesore.
That'd be great, actually. I think that would be really helpful. Thank you. Oh, yeah, no, not me. The five of them, not this one. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Yes, I will add on a little bit onto here. If you contact our Louisville museum, they are currently wrapping boxes with historic photos of the city. And that might be nice. My concern is going back to the fire areas. If you go in and put it in now, you'll just be digging through dirt for most of those slots. So it might be more cost-effective to do the fire areas first. That would be mine. And I would like it if the cable were put in front of my house before I build the house, or at least put the landscaping in. Okay, okay, never mind. But yes, I like the idea. And I'm wondering about getting the service to areas that aren't currently developed in the city. So going, you know, further south and west on McCaslin, in that whole corridor that's not built out yet, but will at some point want cable. And also the area that we call Redtail Ridge, up by the hospital, so just, just north of 36. Those are also areas that could, you could get it in now before the development is done, which would be easier for you also.
And that's a great point. We would love to work with the developers to get our infrastructure in before any landscaping takes place. So working with the Public Works team and Cameron, we would love to do that. We would also love to get the agreement signed, so we can, we can also do that. But we, we hear you loud and clear. I think the one, the, the only concern we had in that, if the homes were close to being completed and construction, and we didn't have a way to serve them, we didn't want to disappoint the residents by saying, we can build out from here, but that pretty old T-cabinet we'll have, we can't connect you to there, so we can't actually get you service yet. That was one of the things we were working through. So that will definitely be top of mind as we revamp our plans with, with your team.
I would definitely say, I think the bigger priority should be, if you can be less disruptive to people who have spent the last two years having nothing but disruption, that is much more customer service friendly. And they will be part form our understanding of saying, you know, it could be six months to a year before we can get you service, but at least it's in and it's done, and they don't ever have to be disrupted again.
We would love to, to do that for the, for the residents of Louisville, for sure.
So just a quick note on Councilmember Fahy's. Their current proposal is only providing for single-family, multifamily dwellings and some of the Redtails commercial. And so they are currently not proposing to add any commercial to the development. So we may have to have a discussion further on that.
Yeah, one other area of, and this is, again, I don't, I don't want to torture this contract from the, the dais. But one of the things that I didn't, well, I think there was a comment in the presentation around non-single-family residences, that there maybe wasn't the demand for, you know, on multi...
No, we would, we would be building to multi-dwelling units.
Okay, all right.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
I misunderstood that, sorry. And I echo the comments that have been made so far about the, just the order in which you're ultimately planning to do that. I figure you can work with staff about what that order might be. And it makes sense to try to minimize disruption where there has been disruption. And, you know, in the areas of the city where things are already dug up otherwise. And, you know, I think there's, to the extent that this affects how soon people can come online, if you do, as you do get subscribers, I think it's, it's good to be equitable around the city. I get to say that now. I would have normally said, or previously said, well, you know, word one is just fine to start with. But I, but I think there is, honestly, there's a, you know, I, I figure that, that may be one of those, hopefully, that's not one of the material points. But I just want to make sure that that gets vetted in some way. You know, consistent with business necessity and all that. But I, I think that's a, you know, that's gonna be a concern that residents will look at if there's just one area of town that is gonna get it. look at if there's just one area of town that is going to get it and first, and then two years later, somebody's going to come on. So I'll, I'll leave that to, again, that's not an issue that I can describe any more detail than that, but it, I think that'd be good. Are there other comments?
Mayor, would you like to take public comment?
Yes. Public comment, anybody? Online, it doesn't look like there are any folks who are out there. Is there any public comment from those in the room? No?
Do we feel like we have to continue this or what are we going to get with a continuance?
Well, I, I guess the, the question is, yeah, do we continue the hearing? Is that the best way of doing it? Is, we're not really, we're not going to vote. I, I think, I take the director's comment to be good. We didn't talk about that specifically, but I think that seems to be what we're, what makes the most sense. Does anybody on council have any difficulty with the idea of bringing back something when it's baked a little bit further?
Hopefully though, we can, like, it won't be like down the road very far. Like, it's not like you'll wait till March to bring it back to us, but hopefully in the next couple of weeks, I don't know. It's, it's a lot on your plate and your department's plate, but, you know, if we can, the sooner because, the sooner they can get going, if this is what we choose to do.
Yeah, maybe based on what you're hearing, staff, city attorney, license, licensee, what are we talking about realistically? How much time to-
I want to re-summarize what-
That's, that's fine too.
I think we heard across the line here. So I think one is, we will evaluate regardless if you approve tonight, the construction phasing, prioritize the burn areas, minimize impacts, that's easy. Two, there was legal questions of can we prohibit Company XYZ from doing this if we wanted to? Again, this is not a contract that we're signing for services. It's a license agreement. We're just allowing this business to put infrastructure under our right-of-way. And then furthermore, on the legalese, I think I heard, should we RFP for ABC service? In this case, it's internet and then restrict others or not? Those seem to be two legal things. So if those are truly important for you to be answered, we would have to come back.
And the additional clarification in the license agreement about responsibility for subcontractors and any damage to-
Correct. Restitution for resident, yeah.
Yeah, public or private property.
Yeah, I mean, what, what I saw in that agreement, and I'm not going to pretend that I studied it forever, but it appeared that it indemnifies the city.
Correct.
And they may have, you know, individual agreements with the, you know, the consumers that they are able to bring into the system and, and hook up to that deal with that. But I, I think the, the gist of this was to the maximum extent possible, we want to protect our citizens individually and, you know, third-party beneficiary language, all that kind of stuff. I'll leave again-
That's right. And, and I took just the briefest look before the meeting tonight and did not see any of that kind of language in the agreement. And it sounds like the licensee would like to talk about what that language would look like. So, you know, I, I think that's a significant issue.
Yeah.
That I don't want to draft something on the fly tonight, and I'm sure they don't want to agree to anything tonight. So I think, you know, maybe the clerk can let us know what the agendas look like going forward and-
Yeah, I can say if it can't come back in two weeks, it will likely be March because February is pretty much booked with Redtail.
I think we can do to, the next meeting.
We can figure this out.
Do you think we can?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then I would also add, we'll talk to the other communities, like the North Glens, Westminster's, Pablo, I think there was a fourth in Colorado, and just give you some feedback on their experience.
Well, I, yeah, and I appreciate the push because we're trying to make it, believe it or not, we're trying to be more business-friendly and we don't really want you to have to wait to March for an answer, if we can help it. And I appreciate you guys for, you know, working through those things as quickly as possible. Are there other concerns that weren't described by the director?
If I could just, if I could just put a little bit of color on your, on your summation there, which is what I'm really hoping to hear is sort of what are the parameters of our review of this? What's our discretion? What, what should we be looking for? And, and maybe that's just totally open-ended and it's like, whatever you guys think is best, but it would be helpful to know sort of what, what are the boundaries on our, our decision-making here.
We'll bring that back to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good. Is there anything else from the dais? Anything else from staff or final comments from Intrepid?
Yeah, I think in final comments, we're excited to partner with the city of Lewisville in this investment and bring fast fiber internet to, to its residents. So looking forward to investing in this community and working with you all.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Appreciate it. And we don't have to, we don't have to continue it, we just bring it back. Good.
It's not a public hearing.
All right. City attorney's report.
I have no report, thank you.
Okay. Council comments, committee reports and identification of future agenda items. Then we're adjourned.